We need one more person who we understand is on his way. So, thank you for your patience.
I am, yes. Being known before I did for a lot better, I don't know. Okay.
Thank you.
Dave, Mike Hoffman. He's coming, just be patient.
You have no interpretation, you are probably correct.
Okay, I will call this meeting to order and thank you again for your patience. We don't usually have a problem assembling a quorum, but there were some unusual circumstances this evening. Would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Loretta Cowing.
Yes.
Arthur Lacks. Dave Robinson. Deb Terrell. Barry McCracken. Both Chip Roeram and Beverly Hood both have illnesses or death in the family in one case and will not be here tonight, but we do have a quorum.
Thank you. We have the minutes of our June 15th meeting. Does anyone have any corrections or additions to those? If not, we will file them for the record. Do we have any communications?
None outside of items that are already cases for this evening.
Okay, we'll reconsider those at the appropriate time. City Council action.
Yes. So, back in April, we reviewed a conditional use permit for a halfway house at 375 North St. Joseph Avenue. That was approved by City Council last night with the provision as the conditions that you guys proposed, including the one-year renewal. So, we'll be able to see how it's operating and take a look at it in a year. I put on here that the folks that were proposing the fast-food business at Mike's Corner Shell at 986 Bus Station had not asked to proceed to City Council. If you remember, that was a 3-3 vote from you. However, I just got notice today that they do want to proceed to City Council, so that'll probably be going to the City Council on August 2nd. We also had the request for the sports entertainment business, AKA ax-throwing business, at 257 Southwest Avenue. That was approved by the City Council. And we reviewed a case for a major variance for the storage of a large recreational vehicle at 840 South Roosevelt Avenue. They have requested an appeal to City Council. That will be on one of the two City Council meeting agendas in August, I'm not sure which yet.
Thank you. And we have one case that is still outstanding, can you bring us up to date on that?
I can. I got an email from their architect today. They have Robinson Engineering doing a survey of what was built in terms of the parking lot. He is also going to be coming up with suggestions, some suggestions in terms of improving the drainage and making sure that it works properly out there. They have also retained a landscape architect once he's finished with the survey work. They're going to draw up a landscape plan for the property. And they also are talking to a firm to look at any potential environmental issues with that site since it was a dry cleaner at one time. So, they're working on those things. They've asked that we continue the case again in August so that they can hopefully get those pieces of work completed so that we can have a better understanding of what is actually going to be proposed.
Thank you. That brings us to new business. We have three cases for which we will hold public hearings this evening.
So, I'm sorry ma'am chairman, but I think technically you probably should vote to continue that last case till the next meeting, if you don't mind.
You're undoubtedly right. I would entertain a motion to continue case number 2021-5-1. Is there a second? Motion by Ms. Terrell, seconded by Mr. McCracken to continue case 2021-5-1. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll revisit this probably in August. Now, we'll start the public hearings. We have three different cases. For each of one of them, it would be helpful if people would sign the speakers list so that we have a written record of those who speak to, who wish to comment on these three cases. And they must also be sworn in individually. The first case is 2021-6-1. This is a request for a variance for property at 1350 Hawthorne Circle. The applicant would like to have a larger garage than would ordinarily be allowed, and so that falls under the heading of a major variance. The distinction between major and minor is whether it exceeds 10% of the standard requirement, and this one does. So, is the applicant here or someone to speak for him? Yes, sir.
If you all want to come up, we are, we do have a court reporter that is viewing this, I assume at her home, and taking minutes of the meeting. So, anytime that anyone speaks, they need to do it in a microphone and speak clearly and state your name prior to speaking so that we get a good record of this. And so, do you gentlemen swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and proceed.
My name is Jacob Carlisle. Thank you to the committee tonight for allowing us to present our variance request for the construction of a new detached garage proposed to be constructed at 1350 Hawthorne. My name is Jacob Carlisle. I'm the petitioner on behalf of the owners, Michael and Carrie Gallagher. We've also provided a packet of information related to the desired building, including drawings, information related to the building's intended usage, as well as information on current investments and improvements made to the subject property by the owners. Mr. and Mrs. Gallagher have recently relocated to Kankakee from Ohio and purchased this home on Hawthorne, and they've made some improvements already. The existing residence provides only a single-lane driveway and a single-car attached garage. This variance is being requested due to the size of the proposed structure, which is designed to facilitate three vehicles while maximizing usable backyard space for outdoor enjoyment. Based on current ordinances, detached garages are limited to a maximum of 816 square feet or 30% of the total lot buildable area, whichever is less. The current buildable area is 6,252 square feet, allowing for a garage of 1,875 square feet, but then is further limited by the 816 square feet ordinance maximum. The primary reason for the variance request is related to the site adaption of the proposed structure. An 816-square-foot garage is sufficient size to provide for three cars, but requires the design of a rectangular structure, approximately 30 to 32 feet by 24 to 26 feet. Challenges exist on this site due to the access to the backyard with enough space on the sides for an auxiliary driveway. The access to the new garage will be through the existing single-car garage by installing a new door at the rear, and this format severely limits the location of the building on the site. Due to the circumstance, the shape of the building is designed to provide a three-car garage that is adapted to the site constraints, allowing for retaining significant exterior yard, backyard space. If we are limited to the 816 square feet to achieve the three-car desired garage, the format and shape of the building will significantly impact available remaining outdoor space due to excess paving requirements due to the limitations created by the single-car garage. Essentially, we don't have room to get around the house to get to a detached car garage in the back. In short, the size limitation does not consider the orientation of the building on the site, the site buildable area, building approaches, or achieving the design goals for a full floor-to-ceiling windows and other architectural elements implemented to enhance the quality of the building being constructed. Our proposed three-car garage is 1,175 square feet in size, and it's L-shaped, it's not a rectangle. That allows us to push the design of the building to one side of the yard closest to the access point in lieu of stretching it across the back of the yard, increasing the amount of paving that's required and taking up more of the usable backyard space. It's my understanding that the intent of the ordinance is to ensure that homeowners and neighbors are protected from unsightly, large, or obtuse construction affecting density and quality of life for the residents. The proposed building will enhance the neighborhood beyond what the 816-square-feet rectangular garage is capable of providing, and reduce on-street parking and congestion. Without approval of this ordinance, or this very advanced request, the garage will be limited to 816 square feet, which will take up essentially the remainder of the impermeable surfaces that we'd have to use for just driveway and circulation. So, long story short, is we've pushed this garage in a design format to the side while maintaining three cars. The L shape of it pushes us a little bit larger than what we would have with a rectangular three-car garage.
Greetings, everybody. Never done this before, so I hope I...
You need to be sworn in too, Mr. Gallagher.
Where I'm at, just state your name.
I am Mike Gallagher, and I swear to tell the whole truths, nothing but the truths. Is that what you wanted?
Yes, go ahead.
Told you, I'm a rookie at this. So, Jacob gave the facts, and I just thought I'd share a little bit of personal information that may not affect your decision, but might be interested in the research tidbit of why we came to Kankakee and why we're trying to do what we're doing. So, three points, I'll try to keep it short. Why this house? We bought the house right after our grandson was born, in October. It was meant to be a second home and a sleeper home, so we didn't have to sleep in the basement with my daughter and her husband and bother and disrupt them. But, once we started living here and meeting all the neighbors and seeing the area, we really came to like this, and so my wife and I asked ourselves, can we make this a permanent residence and just downsize? We're getting older anyway, we should probably get rid of the stuff that we have. And so, we came to say, we need a larger garage, we can live with a smaller house, but we need a larger garage. And so, that's our attempt, we're trying to make this our permanent residence so that we can live here till we die and our daughter can then take care of us. So, that was point one, why that house. Point two is I believe in community, and we both believe in community, and we like the community here. And normally, we would make our permanent residence in a different type of community. But, we believe in good relations, investing in the community, and things that we didn't have from where we're coming from. It's a down-to-earth people place, and we really enjoy it. We really like our neighbors, I'm not just saying that. We are, we've found better neighbors here than we've had in our whole life. As such, we really desire to get this garage, but a garage that meets our needs and, as a professional retired designer, one that meets my perfectionistic desires. We also believe in the diversity of architecture, there's a lot of diverse architecture in Kankakee. We believe in diversity of people, and those things don't scare us away, they invite us, invite us to help build this community, which frankly, if you don't mind me saying, is in dire need of help and growth. We hope that maybe we can be a bit of a ripple effect by the modifications we do in our garage and in our house. So, with that in mind, garage history, right? When it comes to why do you want a garage of this size? I've had small garages my whole life, everyone can relate, we have too much stuff. Garages have not been designed for the lifestyles that we live today, nor are they designed for what's in the future. I know this because I had a large research team, we researched trends, we saw what was happening in various places in the world, and so, I didn't want another garage where I couldn't even walk around a large SUV which seemed to getting bigger all the time. So, if I was going to do a garage and spend this much money, I didn't want another cramped, basic, square, three-car garage. And oh, by the way, my wife says garages aren't designed for little grandkid-powered toys and a place to park them as well in the garage. So, those are my personal appeals, and we can answer questions, I guess.
How many cars do you own?
We own four cars.
Four. So, if this variance were granted, you could park all of your vehicles indoors?
Yes, which is the goal, and get them off the street. Especially when it snows here.
Which it does. Go ahead.
No, the shape of the garage is L-shaped, so we've basically got a one-car garage and a two-car garage in the shape of an L. That's not as an efficient design, laying out to get three bays in there to facilitate three cars, so the size of the garage increased. The 816-square-foot limitation that exists would be essentially a 30-foot by 26-foot garage. That's allowable, and we could put that in the backyard, but like I said, it's going to take up a big part of the backyard, it's going to meet all the ordinance requirements in the building codes, but it's not, it's not the best for the owners, it's not the best for the neighborhood, we're going to end up paving a lot more concrete to get access to all three doors on that type of format of the garage. The garage as it's designed now was designed architecturally to fit the site, it's adapted to the site to fit. And though it grew slightly, about 300 square feet in size, that was the intention of it. It's a better fit for that property.
So, if I could add to that, maybe to help your understanding, it's basically you just go in one single door and then you stuff two cars to the right. If we can't do that, then you'd have three cars that just go straight in and straight out and a whole lot more concrete rather than just a single piece of concrete into the garage. And I might point out that a large, a good portion of the square footage overage is because we've designed in an overhang over a front walkway, so I could sit with my grandkids when it rains or what have you.
I can actually speak to that too, so the way that the code is written as well, and I understand that this code's not been revised for some time. When we calculate the square footage on the garage, it's outside to outside of walls, gross square feet, and any roof hangs in excessive one foot. So, we have on the front side of the garage, or the house-facing side of the garage, a three-foot overhang, so they've got a little bit of covered roof. That's actually 120 square feet of the 300 overage right there, and it's just a roof, it's not even part of the garage. But again, that just comes back to how the ordinance was written, how it's calculated.
I'm a hobby sportsman, so one is just a Corvette, and the other is a Ford Focus that I do hobby racing for time, not... Well, and they have to be show cars. I only do show cars, I don't do raw race cars. They're street legal cars that, yeah, my, my fun side needs those for transportation. But, is it, do I need them to take the grandkids to the store? No.
The zoning ordinance gives the regulations for various kinds of accessory uses, such as a garage. And it says, garages and carports, parentheses, private slash detached slash attached, close parenthesis, not to exceed 816 square feet, and so on. You could argue either way, but I think that means that includes the existing garage plus whatever is built is subject to 816 square feet unless there is a variance. It's not 816 plus the existing garage. So, the variance that you need is substantially more than you requested.
I don't know, was that a question or a statement?
It's a statement of my interpretation of the zoning ordinance.
Just to be clear too, I want to make sure that I understand, I said, just to be clear, I want to make sure that I understand, the 816-square-feet limitation cares nothing about parcel size based on how the ordinance is written, meaning you could have five acres of land in the city of Kankakee and the ordinance still limits homeowners to 816 square feet for a detached structure?
Unless there's a variance.
That's the truth, is that correct?
That's a true statement.
Understood. So, we're looking at, we're looking at it from the perspective, though, of the land that we do have available, maximizing the available land that we have. So, again, that's, that's the motivation for creating the garage in the design format that it's in, is to try to not plop down a building in the middle of the site that takes up the entire backyard.
And not to be confrontational, but maybe to provide some clarity, the last line of Mike's report said, if this is approved, it might be a good time to update that zoning ordinance to what current times might be requesting.
And Mr. Terrell, my question was only related to the comment about inclusion of the existing garage, of the existing house. I want to make sure that I fully understand what the ordinance says, so...
Is there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak either for or against this petition or to ask a question? This is your opportunity.
Come on up to the microphone, if you would please. And anybody that is going to speak, if you want to raise your hand now and say, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, say yes.
Yes, I do that.
Thanks, okay. State your name.
Hi, I'm Janice Serena. My mother lives directly east of Mr. Gallagher, and we were just having concerns, and I'd like to show you a few pictures, if I may.
Certainly.
And this is just kind of a view.
I believe I talked to your mother on the phone. I believe she called.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
So the first picture is in my mom's kitchen, and where she spends a lot of her time. And if you can look at the view, you can see where her view is of to the west, and it's a very beautiful view. And you can see the ends of Mr. Gallagher's garages of what exist right now. And what we're concerned of, of how big this garage is, it's going to be taking away her whole view. And she's lived here 20 years. She bought this house, fell in love with this house, and she's just, you know, very upset about like, she's 89 years old, and is she going to be able to handle all the noise? Because I believe my husband's been in construction for 30 years. I've heard jackhammers, roofing, you know, the whole works. It's going to be a long process for this house. I know how long it's going to take. And just some other point I want to point out is, you know, talking about the view, and I heard him talk about that the measurements of the garage are 34 by 24, 26? Is that what it was, sir?
That's what the allowable size was.
Allowable size is what he's trying to get. So, you know, it's going to be, it's going to go right from, from what I understand, he's going to be knocking out the back of his existing garage to make a kind of a breezeway? Is it kind of, to go to this other garage, kind of like that?
That's fine.
Okay, I was just trying to get a picture in my head, and I was, my husband reads blueprints, so he was trying to look at it, but we couldn't find any measurements. So we were trying to get a view of what she would be seeing every day.
I think we're happy to show it if she wants to see it.
Yeah, we saw the blueprint. So we're just trying to, you know how it is, it's like, it's different when it's on paper than when you see it actually, you know, in real life. So we're just concerned about that. We were concerned about, you know, like the property value, you know, like, you know, like someone moving in, you know, like their view's gone. You're going to be able to see that the view's gone. We worried about the noise level that she's going to have to deal with. My mom has, you know, heart trouble, and she gets high blood pressure, and it's going to be a lot of noise going on. And, you know, we were just kind of concerned too, just like, you know, Mr. Gallagher's a very nice guy, I've met him, but we're just kind of concerned, like, you know, if you have all these existing vehicles, why you would come into, you know, residential Kankakee and just buy a one-car garage? You know, I know if you had...
I can answer that for you later if you want, not to...
Like if you had five kids, you know, you wouldn't go buy a one-bedroom house, you know, you'd have to buy enough for everything, so. We were, that's, you know, just some things we were concerned with. I noticed that, you know, like even just to have a regular two-car garage is, you know, most people like, you know, I live on South Sexton, you know, we have an alley in. Our garage is probably, you know, 24 by 24, holds two-car garage. And, you know, it's probably whatever price, 600 square feet or somewhere around there, and this is going to be almost double that. So I'm just, you know, trying to picture my garage compared to what this garage is going to be, and the way it looks, it's like it's going to take up a lot of his yard. So how are they going to, you know, is the only way he going to go through is that one-car garage? There's no alleys. How, is that the only way you're going to get in and out? And if you have cars in your driveway, what are you going to do then? Are you going to want to try and drive around the garage? And that's just grassy area, you're going to be right, you know, going up to people's fences. So those were some of the concerns we had. I think, Mom, did you want to come up and tell? Okay.
Yes, the white fence, your mom's fence?
Yeah, the white fence is my mom's fence.
I can't see, this is too small for me. How many feet is the use that we clean to between the fence and the property line?
No, I'm sorry, between the white fence and his property line? I think that, what is it, six inch? I'm not even sure what the ordinance has to be from, when you build a fence on your property, how far it has to be off the other person's property? Is it six inches?
You want me to try to answer that? Again, I don't want to speak.
No, go ahead, I don't...
So we had a survey when we bought the house, and it looks like their fence is within about two inches over the property line on their side, which is fine.
Over to your property line?
No, it's on your side, so there's probably two inches of grass on this...
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Before our property line.
But I guess what I'm saying is, how wide is the passageway for emergency vehicles?
Yeah, there, it is, what is it, 10 feet?
It's over 10 feet, I think.
Ooh.
You can drive through there, I've driven through.
It'd be about 12, which is my eyeball.
Yeah, I've driven back and forth with my SUV already.
What about a fire truck going in there? How dare we get in?
You can just move that between the white fence and the garage?
Yeah, pulling a moving trailer. Yeah, pulling a moving trailer too, yeah. There's enough space there.
On her side or on the other side?
On your side. I've done it on both sides. Part of my research.
I'm going to let my mom speak, if that's okay.
My name is Joanne Thompson, and I live at 1185 South Wilson Avenue. We bought this home 20 years ago. My husband passed in 2007. We have been, I have been baker all my life, baking, cooking. I lived on the farm, so I mean, I'm sitting in my kitchen. The first thing I looked at when I bought, we bought this house, was the kitchen. And the kitchen has a big picture window, and it faces his property. And I, if they put anything there, I will not see anything. Not any sun from my flowers in my backyard, there'll be nothing there. I'm 89 years old, just turned 89, and I feel like now I need rest. I need my home. I need, I love my home. And it's never fun to be able to look out and have to look at that, all that cement. I just feel so bad about it that I just, it just bothers me terrible. It just, it's not nice, it's not good when you get old and you have a lot of problems, and your kitchen is your main place. You sit in the kitchen, you do your cooking in the kitchen, you bake in the kitchen, you wash dishes in the kitchen, you write your checks out in the kitchen, you pay your bills in the kitchen. Everything is done in the kitchen. My family comes over, they, every Saturday, all my children show up. We all sit in the kitchen. We have coffee, we have the donuts. That's our family get-together every week, and we look out that window. The window, that window is just beautiful to look out at, so you can see the trees and the sky, and you can see the evening when the sun goes down. I will see nothing of that. It'll just be all wall. And it's only five feet from my fence.
I have a question. So are you against putting up a garage period, or are you against the variance?
I really don't, to tell you the truth, I really wouldn't care for either one.
You understand, she does understand that, you know, that there are laws.
Yes, I do. But it's just, put yourself in my place. I'm 89 years old. I've lived here for 20 years and love this home. This was a home to me that I'd never forget, and that picture window. I wouldn't care about the rest of the house. I love that window. Because I can look out, I can see my birds, my bird feeders, all the things that I have out in the back, the bird, the bird houses, all my things, and all my flowers. Those, them flowers, and that'll never see sun. And I thought there was something to do with solar ordinance.
This little space right here, between the proposed building and the existing building on your property?
That's five feet.
How big is that?
That's five feet.
Five?
Which is the same as her house to the fence.
All three houses around that corner are five feet.
Five foot?
Five foot space between...
No, she has, from the back of her house, it's five foot from the fence, and she looks at a six-foot fence, just so everyone knows.
Yeah, but my fence has got all that laid out through the time.
Hold on.
One at a time.
One at a time.
She's entitled to all her needs, and I can respect that, and I don't, I don't want to cause conflict. But just for clarity, they both would be five foot, which is what the code says.
So this little space right here is only five feet deep?
I'm trying to see where you're pointing.
So you have a satellite view of both properties in your report?
Right.
Could you help her with showing that, or I can pull up from my record if you'd like?
Oh, the distance between his house and his garage is that area? Okay.
Oh, between the garage and, between the existing garage and the garage, is what she's asking. Oh, I'm sorry. That's 10 feet, I believe.
I'd have to look at the setting. I gave away all my drawings.
In all truth and fairness, if we build an 816-foot garage, her view would not change 100%. Again, I don't want to make a bad view for her, but we're trying to, we're trying to find, that side of the house would be the same. And I might say, our picture windows would look out. The condition she says our garage would be is what we look at on her house every day.
All three houses, all three houses that exist on that corner, do they have an in-lot where the next lot in from the in-lot, and the lot behind them? All of those houses have structures that go up to the five-foot setback line, with exception of the Gallaghers.
I'm...
So their house does, the house behind the Gallaghers does, and the one at the corner, all, all of them?
By the way, it's giving me fences.
No, I mean, the building itself. They all have either primary or auxiliary structures that go to within five feet of the property. The same as what we're, we're planning to...
Deb, the answer to your question is, between those two garages, it looks to me it's about eight feet. I mean, I'm scaling from a small drawing, but...
It's just enough to have a hair go through there.
Madam Chairwoman?
Maybe we need to, whatever happens, even though, ladies and gentlemen, maybe I can try to do some things irregardless of what we do to help neighbor happiness.
Could we circle back on the 816-square-foot comment? So how we, and looking that over through the ordinance, that's specific to auxiliary structures in the ordinance.
Accessory is the phrase.
Or accessory structures. So the garage that is attached to the primary structure would not be a part of that calculation, or am I misreading that?
That's not my interpretation. The ordinance says, "Garages and carports, private slash detached slash attached."
As part of the accessory structure.
Right.
That's the way we always consider attached.
So the 816 would include any combination of attached and detached garage space.
So there are no garages, and again, just trying to get clarity, in the city of Kankakee that exceed three cars, then?
I won't say there aren't any.
Okay.
I'm saying that's what the ordinance...
That would require a variance, then?
Well, even then...
Correct? Just want to make sure.
I cannot give you absolute assurance that it has never happened. But the ordinance stipulates an 816-square-foot total, and as my, as I interpret it, that is the total of both attached and detached.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Is there a process to achieve more permanent clarity on that, or is your word the word?
The code enforcement department interprets the zoning ordinance, and if you disagree with their interpretation, you can appeal that to the same body, the plan commission.
But the reality is, either way, you would need a variance, so...
Yeah. Well, if the existing attached garage was not considered part of the square footage of the accessory building, because that's what we're talking about, is accessory buildings, we could build an 816-square-foot garage within the five-foot setbacks and be fully compliant with all zoning and ordinance requirements. It's going to take up more of the backyard space, it's going to be closer to the fence behind them than it currently is. It's just a different shape and slightly smaller, but the structure still is compliant. Correct?
It is, that is conceivable. If, if we didn't count the square footage of the existing garage, but I think you should, and I think the city would.
Again, maybe just for clarity, I hear what you're saying, but I think what Mike said is, irregardless, it's still a major variance, and it's still in the same petition that we have here anyway.
That is true. Is there anyone else in the audience who wanted to speak either for or against this request? Yes, sir?
I believe you raised your hand earlier, so if you could state your name first, that'd be great.
Mike Mulcahy, excuse me, Mike Mulcahy, thank you. I've known the Gallaghers probably less than six months. They moved in six months ago approximately. And I've seen what they've been doing around the house. They've made some really nice improvements. They've changed the landscaping. And my personal belief is, you own the land, you ought to be able to do what you want to do on your own land. Now, I know it's got nothing to do with the variances and whatnot, but I believe that. Number one, you should make every effort to try and accommodate him if, I mean, I've seen the blueprints, I've seen the sketch, and it looks good to me. I mean, I think it would be an improvement. Money in the tax rolls, cars off the street, and I just came here to speak in support of my new neighbors.
Thank you.
Mike? Mike?
Yes.
Where do you live?
I live right next door, I'm sorry, thank you. I have one door to the west, 1360 Hawthorne Circle. No, right next door.
Thank you.
You probably saw me drive the SUV around the house.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Apparently not. Mr. Hoffman, would you like to summarize the staff recommendation? Oh, excuse me.
So are you going to be storing cars in the present garage also?
At times when it's windy or rainy or snowy, but we can only get one car in there. Yeah, and so one car will still have to stay out, perhaps, depending, I don't know how all this will happen, I don't know what our reaction will be. It's one, it's one step at a time. And I might, I might add, if, we could go two feet higher with the garage and meet the ordinances, but I didn't want to do that because of these kind of concerns. I wanted it to, I really wanted to be a good neighbor, I wanted it to blend with the neighborhood, have the right roof lines, but we'd probably have to go a little higher because I'd have to probably stack two cars.
How high is it going to be now?
It's two feet less than the regulation, which is the normal home heights all throughout there.
Correct, our exterior walls on the garage now, I believe, are eight feet at the eve or the gutter line, and then we go up to 15 feet total tall, which is matching the roof lines of those rounded buildings. But the ordinance allows up to 18 feet, I believe.
I feel like it probably has to be said that when we consider a request for a major variance, there's a particular weight given to hardship. And there's no hardship demonstrated here because these are race cars, luxury cars, that aren't necessary to the property. You know, we're considering a parcel here, a piece of property, and what's necessary to that property for the homeowner to enjoy the office, to enjoy their home. And extremely things like hobbies are just that. It's not a hardship. It's not as if you can't park your own vehicle in your garage in your roadway, you have room for that. But by wanting us to grant a variance, we have to look at all of these findings, and there are two findings in particular that this isn't satisfied at all, which may seem implying to say that it shouldn't be granted. The first one is that, you know, it's unrelated to the property, and you can't enjoy none of it. And the second one is that the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by regulations in our zoning ordinance. That's not...
Can you clarify that sentence? What does that mean?
What that means is that, like, if somebody comes to us... What that means is that like if somebody comes to us for a variance for, um, a business, Mr. Hoffman could explain that better than I can, but I'm just going to throw this out there and you can catch me when I fall on my face. Um, let's say that somebody is asking for a variance to use a property for a specific business and they can't yield a reasonable return on their investment if they're not allowed to do it, if they're not allowed to use it for what they intend. You are being allowed to use your property for its intended purpose, which is to live and to store your private feelings. So that's where that comes in, my.
Yeah, that, that's true. I mean, the way I would look at it related to this particular case is if you couldn't put a garage on the property because of the way the lot was configured or setbacks or some type of an easement or something, then you couldn't get a reasonable return because you couldn't have a normal house with, with a space for, for a couple of cars in the garage. Uh, that's not the case here, I don't believe.
So can I, can I respond or ask?
Sure.
So I, how does that, why is, why is that your concern? Shouldn't it be my concern? What return comes on, on the property? Your, I mean, the city's return is the tax base, right?
So these five conditions are actually pretty much out of state zoning law, so.
So reading through the zoning ordinance, uh, the intention of the zoning ordinance is to promote life safety, right? Quality of life, um, density, all of those things that go along with that. Should we have to come back and install the garage that meets the ordinance requirements? We actually go, we're conflicting that statement. Now we're creating an environment in that house that does disadvantage the owner because it makes the house less marketable and diminishes their return. We take up more square footage in the backyard that's longer, that blocks more views of more neighbors, uh, potentially. Um, and we have more paved areas still within the requirements of the ordinance for permeable surfaces. Um, and all of that potentially is, is, is per the ordinance. And what we're proposing to do is, is against an ordinance, uh, that, that promotes life safety and density and environment and peace in the community. Is that, is that correct? Well, we, I mean, paving the entire backyard, and I'm just responding, Ms. Terrell, since you shook your head, paving the entire backyard in order to install a garage that meets the ordinance requirements absolutely diminish, diminishes the return on the property.
The code would not allow you to pave the entire backyard.
Well, pave a more significant portion of it. We've got a very large front yard, so to meet the 30% requirement in the code, we still have another 800 square feet to go before we start to cross that threshold of 30%.
Well, the 30% is irrelevant because it's whichever is less, the 30% or the 816.
I'm sorry, and it's 25%. I'm talking about the amount of allowable impermeable surfaces. That's the other part of the ordinance.
I misunderstood you.
Correct. We're nowhere near that 25% limit right now. Going to the 816-square-foot format, we will. We will be much closer to that 25% impermeable surfaces. Sure.
How would this affect the drainage on the properties? Because if this is properly rated for the use to be intended, then there's going to be a considerable amount of permeable surface taken up that can't be absorbed or anything. Is this, have you done any sort of study to make sure that you're not going to create drainage problem for neighbors?
Right now, we're not showing on, on the survey, we're not showing any drainage that flows towards neighbors. Most of it's flowing towards the street around the existing house and we're staying under the limit of impermeable surfaces.
I'd just like to comment to the statement you said before, and you're entitled to your own opinions. I'm, I'm not trying to change your opinion, I'm just trying to share my thoughts. And I'm not trying to go against any rules or laws.
Wait, wait, my, my opinion doesn't have any randomness at all. I'm doing my best as planning member to interpret the city's ordinance.
Okay, well, I might beg to differ a little, but we don't need to, to pick at that. I was going to say, I'm a respecter of rules and laws, I'm a man of faith, I'm not going to go against any laws like that. But you said it's not a hardship and I, that's a subjective statement in my mind because my life and the quality of my life, I get to determine in, in respecting laws and authorities. And my life is all about my family, being close to my daughter, which is why I moved here, my grandkids, and going in and out all day long, working on my cars. It is a hardship. I could get a shop a block down, a block away. That's not a quality of life I want. And it might not matter to this decision, but I just want you to understand my personal perspective on that.
I do. However, the word hardship, it's not my own word, it's the word that's applied to the whole principle of determining these findings. I didn't create the word hardship and its definition in terms of ordinance is different than its definition to you in terms of your actions.
Okay. Sure.
Are there any other questions or comments? Are you prepared to act?
May I say one more thing?
Oh, yes.
I, I only have one little concern because I'm thinking.
Could you just say your name again?
Oh, I'm sorry. Janice Serena.
Thank you.
Um, I just have one little concern after listening to this. And the only thing I'm worried about now is, you know, we are concerned about how big this garage is and the view and how it's blocking everything. And then I keep listening to, well, if we don't get this garage, we're going to use more square footage, we're still going to be blocking your view and we can even go up two feet more on rafters. And I, I feel like, okay, so is this, is this like a payback? Are we going to end up with something worse than what, you know, what we thought? Like, I don't want someone to feel like, just because we said, you know, it is kind of, you know, it's a blockage of our view, it's decreasing our, our, what our home is, her home is like and everything, that I don't want someone to say, well, you know what? Guess what? We're not getting what we got. So now I'm building this, I'm going to make my rafters higher and the view's even worse. I feel like I keep hearing that when, when they're talking, that there's always that option of doing that. And I don't want that held against us for, you know, stating how we feel.
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, yes, sure.
An inherent part of architectural design is us coming into properties like this and evaluating them and saying, what is the best format to achieve the project's goals, right? What's the functional goals we're trying to achieve and what's the best way to get there? We evaluated a lot of different opportunities for this garage that would have been within the ordinance requirements, would have been at the setbacks, would have been limited, um, but they weren't the right fit for this property, for this parcel and for functionally how Mr. Gallagher intends on using the structure. So when we bring up, um, the alternative, the alternative is what the code's restricting us to. It's what the ordinance is saying we are restricted to doing. Is that the best solution? I don't think so, not as, not as a licensed architect, as a professional designer. I think the, the ordinance is hampering our ability to provide a quality design that takes into consideration all of those factors. And I guess that's, that's my point in making those statements and I think Mike's as well is, well, if, if, you know, if we want a garage and we have to be compliant with the ordinance as it currently stands, we're not left a lot of options. We feel like this is a better solution and that's why we, we filed for the application for the variance.
Would you like to summarize the recommendations or observations of the staff?
So there are five criteria that, uh, the planning board needs to consider in, in making a determination on variance and really we should be meeting all five of those criteria. Um, I would like to say before that, that, um, I tend to agree a little bit with Mr. Carlyle and that our code is pretty old and we probably should come back and revisit the square footage number and proportionality to lots and things. So I think that is a valid point, but right now, we need to work under what the current code says. Uh, and that current code maximum caps the total square footage of, of accessory structures at 816 square feet. I will add also that I interpreted that 816 a little differently than Loretta did. Uh, I thought it was just for the detached garage. If you guys have always traditionally interpreted as entire garage, you should stick with that. So I'm not proposing to change that, but I did state in here, I thought it was a freestanding garage. So it's the best unclear and existing cap. Anyway, having said all of that, the five criteria are, uh, the variance relates to a specific parcel of the land and is due to some unique circumstance. This is kind of a typical lot. I, I don't know what's particularly unique about the lot. So in my opinion, it didn't meet that criteria. Uh, the property in question cannot yield a reasonable return if permitted to be used only under the conditions allowed by the regulations in that zone. Uh, this has been a single-family home for years and has functioned fine. They would still be allowed to build a, an additional detached garage in back, just not of the size they want. So in my opinion, um, it could still yield a reasonable return without the variance. Um, the next criteria is the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to public good and will not alter the essential character of the area. I think it probably meets that criteria, in my opinion, because the reality is those lots are a little bit tight and they still could build a garage there, which the view from, um, her neighbor's house wouldn't be dramatically different either way. It would still be a garage in back and blocking her view. So I think it generally meets that criteria in my mind. The benefit of the variance would substantially outweigh any detriment. Um, it's kind of a toss-up call on that one, honestly. I don't, I don't have a strong opinion one way or another. Uh, the variance would not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance or comprehensive plan or adopted by the corporate authorities. Uh, you know, it's clearly asking for more square footage than is allowed by code. Uh, I, in terms of the overall intent of public self, health with, uh, health and safety, probably is not a big detriment to that. So it's kind of neutral, but it clearly exceeds the square footage. So, uh, because in our opinion, it didn't meet the criteria, we were recommending against it, even though it's a nice looking garage.
Thank you. Are you ready to act?
I kind of feel like we need to get clarity on that question because if, if we have a city planner who's enjoying it in one way and we have our chairman and board members that may or may not remember when we had them in the past, I'm not sure we can proceed without getting some clarity on this.
Well.
I'm not comfortable with this.
Either way, they would, the applicant still needs the variance.
Okay.
It's a question of.
It's not making a difference, you know, when we have, uh, one of the people who is expressing concern about this saying, well, if we don't grant variance, then they might build something even worse.
Mm-hmm.
And that's backed up as being a possibility, then maybe we need to know exactly what he can and can't do, square footage wise, before we go any further because it might be a game changer.
Well, so the.
This is piece of information to make a difference.
That's true.
The difference would be right now, um, if he's allowed an 816-square-foot detached garage and you do not count the existing attached garage, it's a variance of 367 feet. The existing garage is roughly 200 square feet. So add 200 to that, so it'd be a variance of 567 if you include that existing garage. Either way, need variance.
I know, I just feel like since we're not living under any particular time constraints.
Well, I suspect that Mr. Gallagher wants to get go with the garage if he's going to be allowed to do it.
Questioning, is that a reason?
I'm paying for three-star locations, it's like a new mortgage. Every month is just another mortgage payment. But that's not your problem, that's my problem. I'm just, you asked.
I guess I don't, I don't see the value in waiting. It's a variance either way.
All right. Well, with that question answered, then I'm ready to act.
Okay, we're ready to entertain a motion.
Okay. Yeah, we need, um, case of PD 2021, which six, which one, a request for a major variance from residential garage size limitations. Um, I would like to move that we deny the variance because it doesn't satisfy the following areas of findings and there's been no clear hardship demonstrated and maybe we set concerns.
Is there a second? The motion appears to die for lack of a second. Is there another motion? Yes?
Um, Mr. Hoffman.
Yes?
Recommendation, is there, is there a statement there that we deny the major variance?
Our recommendation is to deny it, yes. But if you want to approve because you feel it's appropriate, then my suggestion is you go back and readdress the code and make some modifications to the code because you don't feel that that 816 square feet is a, a fair, uh, criteria on evaluating garages.
Okay, so the recommendation for denial based on.
Your current code.
The recommendation for the 816, the, a bad statement, a bad position being for building.
No, the recommendation for denial is based upon that 816 square feet and the criteria you have in the code for determining whether a variance is appropriate or not.
I kind of agree with you as the expert of how we should interpret the issue and move forward. I'll see what they, that's, that's a statement from your desk of possibilities.
Mm-hmm.
I hope we should.
Yeah, I mean, to me, you got two choices. If, if you want to approve it, I think you also need to be making the statement that we need to go back and modify the code and we're going to approve this one in the fact that we're going to change the standards in the future and, and allow for this larger type of garage, if, if you feel that's appropriate. Otherwise, I would recommend denial.
Do we have a motion?
So we can allow the motion, if I second the motion, we can allow the motion. And if we are against the motion in the vote, how will we vote?
If the motion.
It's dead.
Yeah, if the motion were, were reintroduced, you could second it for purposes of discussion.
But I can't reintroduce.
That's true. Um, you could, if the motion were reintroduced, you could then second it for purposes of bringing it to vote and then vote against it. But as Ms. Terrell pointed out, we're.
If you vote yes, that means you are voting for the motion. If you vote no, it means that you're giving.
Yes. If the motion is to deny, if the motion is to deny and you vote yes, then you are voting to deny the request.
All right.
But first, somebody has to make a motion to, to deny before we can do that.
Or approve.
Well, it's just that Ms. Terrell can't.
Right.
Resubmit the, the, uh, motion.
I can't resubmit.
Yeah. Ms. Watson, do you have assistance for us?
They, I just had a quick question. Mike, if you, if, if they make the motion to approve with the idea that we're going to relook at this code and change the code, is that the verbiage that you just need from them? And then what's the next step then internally? We're going to take this back to code committee? I'm just kind of wondering.
Yeah, this would be zoning ordinance, it'd be ordinance committee, but yeah, well, actually what we would do is if we're going to amend the zoning code, we'd bring it here first with some proposed modifications and changes. We'd conduct a public hearing, uh, then we would take it to ordinance committee.
Okay. And that's not going to hold their project up if they approve this with the idea that we're going to change the code?
Correct.
Okay. Just trying to get some clarity, if you need it, on the internal process of what that would look like.
If the variance is granted, then the applicant has a green light regardless of what we do about amending the code.
Yeah, there's an internal process of site review probably that's going to happen and permitting, obviously, but I just, if, if the code changing is what you're wondering about and how comprehensive that would be to this process, it's just, it's an internal process that would go back to the city and then through the code committee. Just trying to provide a little bit of assistance.
Right.
With a green light, you can handle it. You would, you would agree?
That's your decision.
Yes. It's up to you.
The latter one about going back and changing our code is irrelevant to the decision to... Everyone says that we don't make that decision.
Your decision really should be based on your existing code. That is correct.
Yes.
So, we still have no motion on the floor.
So, let's make a go at this thing and probably put some pressure on the code department. In relation to case PB 2021-6-1, request for a major variance from the residential garage size regulation for property zone R1, I so move that we recommend...
No, we don't recommend.
Grant.
We have avariances. We have avariances. We don't recommend to City Council. So, you would need to move that we deny.
Well, or grant.
You would move what?
This case would not go to the City Council unless you turn it down on the appeal, right? So, you are the final decision on a variance. So, it's not a recommendation. It's your approval or denial.
All right. So, therefore, we approve of the major variance.
The motion is to approve the requested variance. Is there a second?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Again, I'm having difficulty with this. Therefore, we recommend denial of major variance.
That was the staff's recommendation.
You don't have to agree with me.
I understand that, but your evaluations include our thoughts. But if you second it, then we can all vote on it, whether we want to go on. Or we need a second.
So, we have a motion, right? As Mr. Robinson said, is there a second?
So, we need a second, and that's more of a...
Yeah. I would tend to agree.
Can I have a second?
Yes. You don't have to vote yes or no.
Yes. Okay. So, the motion is to grant the requested variance. A yes vote is to grant the variance. Any further discussion? If not, would you call a roll, please?
Dave Robinson.
Yes.
Deb Terrell.
No.
Barry McCracken. Arthur Lacks.
No.
Loretta Cowing.
No.
Okay. Then, that is denied.
So, the motion is defeated and the variance is denied. The applicant is free to appeal the denial to the City Council and should consult Mr. Hoffman about how to do that. The next case on our agenda is number 2021-6-2. This is a request for a conditional use permit in the C1 zoning district for property at 995 North Kennedy Drive. The applicant is Troy McIntyre, and he wants to operate a tattoo parlor at that location. Is the applicant or representative here?
Can't hear you.
Come on up to the microphone, please.
I've never done this.
No problem. First of all, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Go ahead and state your name.
Troy McIntyre.
Troy, tell us about what you want to do. Tell us about what your plan is.
It's to open up a new tattoo studio at 995 Kennedy...
Would you use the microphone, please?
To open a new tattoo studio in Kankakee? I don't...
Is there already a tattoo shop there? There's a sign there.
Yes, but we're not all the way open. We're going through this right now. I've been renovating and getting it all ready because if it's approved here, we still have to go through the state. The Health Department at the state will have to come in, too.
I see.
Do we want to see a state permit before we do this?
No.
No.
They'd have to have the state permit before they got the occupancy license, occupancy permit.
Yeah. The city wouldn't issue a business license or occupancy until they saw that, so... And I should note for the record that I received a letter from the property owner saying that they were supportive of this request tonight, so it is a legal request.
What do I...
So, tell us about how you picked this location.
I've actually had my eye on this location for about 10 years. And it finally came open, and I contacted him, and he was all for it. It's a small, little, private studio. It won't, it's appointment-only, so you can't just walk in and get tattooed at 3:00 in the afternoon if you want. You have to make an appointment. My woman handles all that. It's just a family-run business. It'd just be me and her running it.
Yeah, so that was the question. How many artists will you have? Just yourself?
Yep. Well, I'll be teaching her, so...
And you have to be licensed by the state?
Yeah.
I mean, you individually?
No, the Health Department will come in, and it's just that the Health Department will come in and inspect it. And when it passes Health Department, then they'll issue me the license for that. Well, I got to pay the $500 for that. You don't technically have to be licensed to tattoo in the state of Illinois, but you do have to have your blood-borne pathogens, about the diseases and whatnot, which I've had that for the last 20 years.
The certification.
Yeah, the certification.
The memo says the applicant will be renting one unit within the building, which has space for two tattooing stations. What's the other unit of the building?
There's an apartment above it.
A single unit?
Mm-hmm.
And is that currently occupied?
Yeah. I know him. He's a friend of mine, and he's actually the guy who lives upstairs. His daughter is one of my clients.
We have residents now on the top floor and commercial entity on the road. How does that affect the parking?
It would be cumulative, right? So, you need a space, you need two spaces for the residential unit and three for this, a total of five. There's probably at least four back there, maybe three, three or four in the back, and you can park on the street, too. Yeah.
Oh, and plus, the guy who lives upstairs doesn't drive.
Well, the zoning ordinance still requires the parking space because that could change tomorrow. He could move out and somebody else move in. Is there anyone in the audience who wanted to speak either for or against this petition or to ask a question? Mr. James?
I'm Stanley James. I own the property. I've owned it for several years. Being in real estate since 1961, I've seen a lot of things come and go, good and bad and stuff. And I let the property stay vacant because I had several people that wanted to get into it before. It really wasn't appropriate for the area. I had, the last time I rented the property was to a medico facility that sold marijuana. And they meet all the standards and requirements of the law. That was good enough for me. This gentleman come along later on and asked about it, and here again, he meets all the pricaria of being legal and doing it right, clean and sanitary. As to the apartment upstairs, it was there from 1967 when I bought the property. And the party that's up there is a veteran, disabled veteran. He's been with me probably for about eight years now. And I asked him about it, and he agreed that he could accept it. And all I can tell you is that I checked the facility. It's clean, it's legal, and it's up to date, and it's got to meet the Health Department code. And as far as I'm concerned, it's a clean business, and I accept it. And I think that it matches its own commercial. It's been zoned commercial for years, the whole corner, all four properties I own there. And so, I feel that to deny this would be a little bit on the left side. I think it's a very good match, and I've been observing it and keeping it, my eye on it, and I'll tell you right now, if it goes astray, it will be gone. That's the type of landlord I am. So, I suggest that you agree with them and give them the permit because I'm telling you, it's a clean operation. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
So, if we grant a conditional or recommend a conditional use permit for this property and it's just a rental, you know, it's always been my understanding that a conditional use permit is given to the property, not the business entity. So, what happens if we give a conditional use permit for a tattoo parlor there and then these people sell the business to someone else, something like that? Can we attach a condition that the conditional use permit cover only this business?
Yes. I mean, you're absolutely right, Deb. Normally, a conditional use goes with the land. So, if they sold this business to another tattoo artist, as long as they met the conditions you've attached, they would be allowed to go ahead and operate there, unless the building was vacant for more than a year, in which case, the conditional use would go away. That's the normal process. There are communities that, and you can, I believe, attach a condition to this, that it is applicable only for this specific operator. So, you could say that it's only for them. Anybody else would have to come back and get another conditional use, if you can put that in your motion.
So, are you operating and seated right now?
What do you mean?
Do you have a business right now that you operate?
No. I used to work at a few of the other shops in town. I left there to go open up this. I'm helping her at home right now, watching the kids while she works, until this is approved and whatnot. So, it's not actually operating as of yet. Like, if you guys approve it, I have to call the Health Department, and then they're going to have to come in, and they'll do their inspection. And then, once they approve that, then we'll be able to operate.
I want to know if we get a city business license first.
We already applied for that, and they said we have to come do this first, and it was ready. And if it was approved, we can go up there tomorrow and get it because I've already paid for it. And they said it was ready, didn't they?
Do you have the Health Department's question?
No, that's part of the, there would be the license. When they get a license application, they check with us, they check with the Health Department, they check with the Fire Department, and they're going through those steps.
Well, I know we went through the Fire Department. Was it the Health Department?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not.
Well, whenever I call the Health Department, they'll come in and inspect it, and then I'll do what needs to be done.
You have been doing that for a long time?
30 years. It's the only thing I've ever done.
How many years?
30. That's all I've ever done.
Would you like to review the staff recommendation?
Sure. So, if this property was zoned C2 or C3, we wouldn't even have this discussion because it's permitted use in those districts. But it does require a conditional use in C1, which is our neighborhood district, just to make sure that there aren't going to be problems with neighbors and it fits into the environment of the area. This property being located on Kennedy and where it is, honestly, we have no problem with it. Our only real concern was when you go out there and take a look at the property, that parking lot's in pretty bad condition. So, I would really kind of like to see them clean and improve that parking area so that it'll work for their customers. So, we recommended a condition that that parking be repaved. Other than that, the only conditions we put on there are actual requirements, anyway, but just to highlight the importance of those, we recommended two additional conditions, that the all requirements of the City of Kankakee Fire Department, Kankakee County Health Department, and the City of Kankakee Code Enforcement Division shall be satisfied prior to commencement of the business operation, and the applicant shall obtain a City of Kankakee business license prior to commencement of the business operation. Sounds like they're fully aware of all those things, anyway, but we put them in there because not everybody is familiar with those, so I put them in there just to make sure everybody's clear and understands. Okay.
So, are you prepared to act?
Oh. Dave says I'm prepared. All right. I will make a motion. Case of PB 2021-6-2, we have a request for a conditional use permit to allow the operation of a tattoo parlor in C3. I would like to move that we recommend to City Council that they approve this request because it meets the findings, as highlighted are here, and I'll read them all. But I would also add the requirements that the City Fire Department, County Health Department, and Code Enforcement shall be satisfied prior to commencement of any business, that the applicant shall obtain a City of Kankakee business license prior to commencement of any business, and that the parking area behind the building be repaid and straightened.
Okay.
Is that required, too?
That was the intent, yes.
Does the condition, does it have a timeline of third?
Oh, did... I'm sorry.
The parking area behind the building should be repaved?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
That's required, too, obviously.
Yes. Is there a second to the motion?
I'd like any motion.
Motion by Ms. Terrell, seconded by Mr. Robinson, to recommend approval of the requested conditional use permit with the three conditions stipulated in the staff memo. Any further discussion?
Yes. Will you want to add anything?
Yeah, I thought that was that.
Okay. So, a yes vote is to recommend approval. I think we're ready for roll call.
Deb Terrell.
Yes.
Dave Robinson.
Yes.
Barry McCracken.
Yes.
Arthur Lacks.
Yes.
Loretta Cowing.
Yes.
All right. So, that's recommended for approval. It should go to the August 2nd City Council meeting.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your business. And the third case on our agenda this evening is number 2021-6-3. This is for property at 993 North Skyler Avenue. It's currently zoned R1, single-family, and the request is to rezone it, change zoning to R3, multiple-family. Are you the applicant?
I am.
Okay.
You've heard this before, but you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
State your name. Hi. My name is Troy Hoffman. I want to thank you this evening, and hopefully, I will not be taking up much more of your time this evening. My request tonight is to go from an R1 to an R3. The property in question at 993 has always been a four-unit building, and we would like to get it rezoned because out front, the parking is deplorable. I mean, the easement there, there's potholes, water, standing water. As cars, over the years, have been pulling into that area, they've damaged and cracked the city sidewalk. I'd like to get that replaced. And whenever I spoke with Mr. Hoffman here, he advised me that we could possibly extend the driveway closer to the home. That way, cars would not be sticking out at an angle into the street there in Sycamore. And then, also, we would be putting in a new sidewalk for people to, you know, use the appropriate way. And we would also... And we would also be taking care of any, the grant of easement, I believe is what you said, any problems that do arise there with us either paving or blacktopping that area. I'm open for questions. I...
You just bought the property recently?
Within the last couple of months, yes, ma'am.
And did you know at the time that it was R1?
No, ma'am, I did not. I don't think my insurance, or the insurance company did either, because if I understand how that all works, if there was a tornado, fire, a natural disaster, if anything, I couldn't even build what is there right now.
That is true. Just as a general rule, it's always a good idea to check this.
That's why you have realtors, and you think that they handle that, but I guess not.
Not all of them, anyway.
Exactly.
We know of one that would. So this is somewhat similar to a case we had, I think, last year, maybe the year before, on the other side of town. An existing apartment building that was owned R1, they came in, they actually wanted to sell it in that case, and requested rezoning to R3, and they had a similar parking situation. Normally, the code requires the parking to be on-site. There's practically no way he could put the parking on this lot. Just, you can't do it, right? So the parking has to be on the right-of-way. The best way to accommodate that is to kind of pave the right-of-way, which it has been paved before, but it's in bad condition. He was proposing to repave it, essentially shift the sidewalk so there's adequate space to do that. We would need to then get an easement on his property for the sidewalk, and the city would enter a grant of easement that would give him exclusive right for those parking spaces in return for being required to take care of those parking spaces. And talking to him on the phone, he sounds perfectly agreeable to do that. So it seems like the best solution, from our perspective, to address what's out there right now. It's a smaller lot than we would allow for an R3 normally, but that's the same case if it was R1, honestly. So the lot size really isn't a big issue. Technically, and just so I'm clear with the applicant, if you really wanted to rebuild exactly what's out there today, you should probably also apply for a couple of variances from yard setbacks. You don't need to do it now. But if you want to protect yourself in the future and be able to rebuild that, those variances would be required at some point, if you were to get...
Hopefully, we'll never have to.
It's obviously legal non-conforming setbacks, the way it is now, so it can stay in its current form, as is. But, well, I'll get into my recommendation later, but I did want to make the analogy to the other case that we reviewed a while back.
Is the building currently occupied?
No, ma'am.
Does it need substantial interior work?
We're in the process now of cleaning. We have a few floors that need to be replaced. We had a water issue where there was, it looks like it had been for a while, where there was some leakage in one of the apartments, and we're just trying to get things up and ready, taking our time, making sure it's done properly.
And it's four units?
It is four units, ma'am.
Is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak either for or against this petition or to ask a question? This is your opportunity. Apparently not. So, Mr. Hoffman, your recommendation is to grant the change of zoning with the easements that you described?
Yes. And the other thing, I guess, I would want to mention is, if you look at the photograph, I guess it's page 36 of our overall report there, the existing dumpster is sitting out there on the public right-of-way. I'd really like to see that moved back onto his property, put on the concrete pad and screened. We can't attach a condition like that to the conditional use, but we could attach it to the grant of easement that the City Council's going to have to grant to allow for the parking arrangement that's in here. So you guys could suggest it. You can't really require it, but you could suggest it. But in our opinion, as he stated, you know, this thing has been an apartment building since it was built. It's a corner location on a fairly busy street. Hard to argue that it's an appropriate use. I think it is an appropriate use for an apartment, and we were supportive of the rezoning request.
Do we have any idea how long it's been zoned R1? How did it ever get built in the first place? You're probably right. Well, are you ready to act?
Okay. In the amendment request, PB 2021-63, we do sell the property to, from R1 to R3. I would like to move that we recommend to City Council approval of this request based on the findings attached, and that we attach a suggestion that the City Council approach the dumpster issue along with their work on the easement. And provide that the dumpster be moved and enclosed on the concrete pad.
Is there a second to the motion? Motion by Ms. Terrell, seconded by Mr. McCracken, to recommend approval of the requested change of zoning and the suggestion to the City Council that they require that the dumpster be moved and screened and appropriately situated as a condition of the easements for parking, which is not, strictly speaking, part of the rezoning. Any further discussion? A yes vote is to recommend approval. We're ready for a roll call, please.
Deb Terrell?
Yes.
Barry McCracken?
Yes.
Dave Robinson?
Yes.
Arthur Lacks?
Yes.
Loretta Cowan?
Yes.
That is recommended for approval to the City Council on, hopefully, August 2nd.
Thank you very much for your time this evening.
You're welcome. Good luck with your project.
Thank you.
Do we have any further business?
So just to, you know, there's a number of zoning ordinance changes that are in the works. Given the number of cases, I haven't had a chance to actually write them up yet, but I will. We talked about a amendment to adjust the minimum size for a plan development. I think we want to tweak our RV regulations a little bit. Sign regulations is an interesting one. We all, I think, agree that the existing sign code needs some major updating. The city apparently had been working on this four or five years ago, something like that, and had gotten close to adopting something, and then never did with the change of administration. That copy was finally found last week. It's been looking forward to that. So I'm going to look at that, and we are going to make some modifications, I think, to the sign ordinance. However, the direction I've gotten is to take it out of the zoning ordinance and just have it as part of the city's code. So that will be a modification, too. I will still show you all the changes and everything else, so you can see what's being proposed, and you can give us comments and feedback on it. But technically, it will be a code and not part of the zoning ordinance when we're done. So that's signs, and then the whole issue with rezonings and dealing with those non-conforming lots, I'm still trying to figure out a solution. The rezoning part's easy, the dealing with the non-conforming lots, I'm still trying to figure out the best way to handle that, so. I will tell you also, for everyone's benefit, that the mayor is judiciously working on, looking for a couple of additional planning board members. He has had a few folks that he thought would be appropriate, but they weren't excited about serving, so he's working on it. I did get a good recommendation last night from Victor Navarez, so hopefully that will work out, but we want to get our board up to full staffing soon, so.
Thank you. The last several months, our meetings have been sometimes quite long, and we never get to all these other projects. Would it be helpful if we scheduled a study session? Or would that just...
No, it would make it get done. Because I can tell you already, I've got at least, I don't have the applications in hand, but I know, well, for sure, well, I think for sure, have the one on Maple Avenue coming back next month, and I've got two others that have told me that they're going to be applying. So we will probably have at least three cases again next month. So if you want to schedule a special session to work on code issues, I would be fine with that.
Would you like to do that? August may not be the best time if people are vacationing or otherwise committed. A regular meeting in August is the 20th. No, excuse me.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Yes.
What would you like to do? Okay. Is Tuesday best? You will not? Okay. Well, the other Tuesdays in August, the 3rd, the 10th, the 24th, and the 31st.
I need a little more time than the 3rd to get you materials, but the others could work for me.
What is your pleasure? Could you send an email to everybody saying, "These are the choices," and pick the date that accommodates the most people?
Okay, we'll do.
Okay. So probably either the 10th, the 24th, or the 31st. Watch your email. Okay. I don't think there's any other business, so we are adjourned. Thank you all.
I wonder if that's from the City Council or...
Yeah, why don't you give it to Barbie, and she will maybe take it to the clerk's office or something?
I don't know. It's this language.
It's Stacy.
It's Stacy.
Oh, Stacy.
Mr. James?
Yes.
The meeting, no?
Okay. I am fine, sir.
You were a neighbor when we first moved into the...
Okay.
You had a building over there. What happened to that?
No, I didn't have a building next to it.
On Court Street?
Yes, yes.
The sole?
Sole, yes.